Okay, folks, we're ready to start tonight's September 12th County Council meeting. We are missing Judge Snyder, who's on a long deserved vacation, and Mr. Ealem, who's recovering from a cystus. So, we'll be starting the meeting off with the invocation from Jason Miners-Hagan from the Wentzville Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Dave Hammond.
Father God, on the drive in here tonight, I passed dozens of American flags still lowered to half-staff. They serve as a solemn reminder that freedom is not free. Quite the opposite, we're blessed to live as free men and women because there are those who stand the line between us and evil. The American military service member, our veterans and our first responders stay in that line day in and day out. Lord, grant them your sovereign hand of protection and provision even more, as we live as free men and women because of your Son, Jesus Christ, stood in our place, bridging the gap between our sin and your glory. I speak the name of all authority, Lord, declaring blessings of your peace, grace, hope, mercy, and love upon our nation and our community. I pray a breakthrough would happen today in the lives of your people for a revival, a restoration of faith, and a returning to the truth in our nation. May it start with us, as we look to our own lives and examine our own hearts here tonight. Lead us in these proceedings tonight with your wisdom, guide our actions, and guard our words, that all we say and do would bring you glory and fulfill your purpose, not man's. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ealem.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Schneider.
Here.
We'll start the evening off with public comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We'll alternate between speakers for and against a particular subject. We'll take three speakers for each subject for and three speakers against. And with that, I will let the council secretaries call the first speaker.
Concerning Bill Number 5092, Amy Robertson.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to share my support for Bill Number 5092. I've spent some time over the last couple of weeks going through this bill, and I believe this is an opportunity that can potentially benefit the people of our county. In reviewing the document and the website for Talent Census, I've learned that this is a program aimed at giving every applicant an opportunity to start on equal playing ground. One fundamental component of their program is to keep applicants anonymous until they've secured an interview. In doing this, no demographic information will be shared with the employer until the interview is secured, making it effectively impossible to decide to interview a person on the basis of anything other than their presented skill. Another component of the plan is more effectively capitalizing on the skills of people already in the employment of a company. For example, they may look and see that Judy Jones is a receptionist at Acme Roofing, but upon further inspection, they realize that Judy has exceptional organizing and time management skills. With this in mind, they may help Acme better utilize Judy's skills to benefit the company. And they also help potential applicants assess and capitalize on their own personal skills so they can make themselves more valuable and ultimately employable. As the parent of children with a variety of disabilities, I can tell you that not just everyone can walk in and just get a job. People see that a person is deaf or someone who struggles to make deliberate and sustained eye contact, and they immediately exclude them from the pool of potential applicants. They don't get to see that those people may be exceptional with numbers or have innovative and actionable ideas, or can be a truly contributing member of their workforce. This program gives people like my boys and other differently abled applicants a chance to at least get their foot in the door, to highlight what they can do, and possibly become gainfully employed and contributing citizens. People who are differently able to represent minority populations are no less valuable as employees than anyone else. In fact, the Talent Census website offers some statistics on the benefits of companies that they see when they diversify their workforce. Some of those benefits include higher rates of productivity and worker retention. This program doesn't just benefit the applicant, but it can also benefit the employer. Accepting this pilot program does not obligate St. Charles County to maintain the program for years to come. The document within the ordinance clearly states that the project itself will take only about four to six months and be fully wrapped up with a report by June 30th of 2023. If this program is awful and not in the best interest of our county, this council and those involved will have the opportunity to share that feedback so that it doesn't become a statewide program. If our county does not choose to accept this offer, the state will simply find another county that is willing to accept it. This would effectively eliminate the ability of our county to have any say in whether or not it's good or bad. Why would we choose to give away the opportunity to be a contributing voice in what happens in our state? Thank you.
County Executive Elman, County Council members. My name is Ken Gontars. I'm the president of Francis Howell Families PAC. Our PAC was founded last August to promote, support, and elect commonsense, back-to-basics, conservative school board members. We raised close to $50,000, got the most votes ever on any non-bond referendum election. We educated and galvanized the community and got our two school board candidates elected overwhelmingly. A major platform that we promoted and endorsed was no wokeness and no CRT in the Francis Howell School District. Question, have any of you done any due diligence in researching and investigating the TransCensus Company along with its talent management suite of products? Are you aware that the expressed goals and objectives of the county of the company CEO, Stephen Rice, he boldly states on the company website, "We can inspire societal change by disrupting unconscious bias in the workplace." Do a Google search on this term. You'll see that it is the epitome of social engineering woke activist agenda. The company's website is filled with classic woke appeals, diversity, equity, inclusion, empathy for Black Lives Matters, and the Me Too movement, gender identity in politics, the call for robust LGBTQ policies, and of course, DEI compliance. And again, this is the epitome of wokeism, of far-left social engineering activist agenda. How much clearer can the CEO make it? Is this council telling this community that it supports, backs, and endorses such far-left activism? This is exactly what Francis Howell Families PAC highlighted, campaigned against, fought against, and won in the April 2022 elections. Last fall, St. Charles County and St. Louis County held their Lincoln Day and Reagan Day dinner dinners respectively. Of the 13 speakers, 11 of them, including Ian Wagner, Eric Schmidt, Burgess Owens, Jay Ashcroft, Scott S. Patrick, Bill Igles, Nick Schor, had as their headliners "No wokeness, no CRT." All spoke vehemently against it. Governor Poson, Senator Blunt echoed the same sentiment when they proclaimed last summer that CRT should not be taught in our schools. So, this begs the question, why is the company Talent Census, which boldly advocates and promotes a woke, far-left social activist agenda, being considered for a pilot in a commonsense, back-to-basics, conservative county like St. Charles? What's going on? One more sentence. A community looks to you, people, for trust, for leadership, and to represent its values. Talent Census and its CEO represent just the opposite. I strongly urge you to withdraw your support of this. Thank you.
Josh Becker.
Members of the council, so I'm here today to clear up some lies and false claims that Councilman Brazel's been pushing about the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development wanting to pilot a program called Talent Census here in St. Charles County. This is not training. This is indoctrination. Why are we using foreign companies to train people in our society is disgusting, and the fact that it's even brought up before us is disgusting. So, do they sound familiar? Well, they should, because they were the comments that Councilman Brazel made at the last council meeting regarding Talent Census. So, let me just help the group out here a little bit. These lies that have been spreading regarding Talent Census because I can tell he did no research by just looking at the front page of Mr. Rice's website and just spewing lies from there. So, I handed you all some detailed information about Talent Census, which came directly from Mr. Rice himself. So, what they do is they basically are not a training platform, and it specifically states that. So, lie number one debunked. Talent Census will provide technology to help streamline services and to give customers the best possible experience. Regarding your statement on political ideology, so Talent Census is not aligned with any political ideology. They are the antithesis of Marxism. Regarding unconscious bias, so the term unconscious bias is an official human resource term which covers all features of bias. It is not a Black Lives Matters term. To disagree with unconscious bias is basically saying you are disagreeing with some of your own constituents today. And Talent Census removes the unconscious bias by removing all characteristics of an applicant under the point of interest except their skills profile, so the applicant will be offered an interview based on their ability alone. And then Talent Census is not a foreign company. It's actually based in the United States with a branch in the UK because the CEO happens to be from Belfast, Ireland. The chief operating officer and their entire board are all from the United States, and the company is actually based out of Delaware. So, a question for Mr. Brazel is, how are you going to react to me as a member of the LGBTQIA community and when I'm going to be sitting up there on the council with you during the next four years? So, I can tell you right now that whatever you say doesn't hurt my self-esteem because I've been called every negative word under the sun, but your words might be hurtful to everyone else in the county. You represent the people of St. Charles County. You represent the gays, the straights, the blacks, the Asians, the elderly, the disabled, the Democrats, and the Republicans. So, please, we just ask that, watch what you are saying. You're representing the county. People don't like to go back and see exactly what you think. You can say whatever you want, wherever you want, but I'm more focused on the county as a whole and basically what's going to happen afterwards. So, thank you.
First, I would like to apologize. At last meeting, I mispronounced Mr. Deanoff's last name. It's Deanoff, not Dean Hoff. Also, congratulations, Mr. Hammond, on, I guess you made it to the church on time. So, that's good. I'm sure we're going to have a lot of comments about the Bill 5092, the Talent Census pilot program. My first objection is that we really need less government in our business management, not more. I don't care if they're from Ireland or they're from the United States. I just think that we already have laws in place to prevent discrimination. I don't understand why we need another program. Another issue that I have is, there was a question, Chairwoman Nancy said, "Do you see ...?" She was asking the question to Bob Schner, "Do you see any downside to our accepting it?" And his answer was, "No, not really." And then he later admitted that he does see that there were some leftist terms which he admitted are in the proposal, but they also, both he and Mr. Elman, said that it doesn't matter if St. Charles does the pilot program or not. In Mr. Schner's own words, he said, "It's no skin off our nose. If it's no skin off our nose, then why are we even bothering? Why do we have to have this push for this indoctrination that's posing as a pilot program?" Also, I wasn't going to say this, but since Josh Becker had got up and spoke about how he wants to work on this county council, and he said that, on his Facebook page, Josh's Facebook page, he said that Joe Brazel was trying to stir up hate in St. Charles County. I don't know if he noticed on your Facebook page, right underneath that comment, was a comment that Joe Brazel needs to be run out of St. Charles County on a pole, and he needs to be tarred and feathered. So, I ask you, who is stirring up hate? And that's all. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of ... My name is Grayson Jostis. I live in Harvester Road. Here's a quote from the CEO of Talent Census. "We help people regardless of age, race, or sexual orientation, regardless of skills and finding jobs. We can inspire societal change by disrupting unconscious bias in the workplace because people make the world around. Whatever Council Brazel brought up in the last meeting was probably he and his buddies made up because I look at the website, and there's nothing about Black Lives Matter or Me Too. It's about helping people regardless of who you are. America is not a one-group-only country. It's a country where everyone is different from race, sexual orientation, and religion, and that's what makes America great. I say this program is great for the people of St. Charles, and I'm proud that the state has chose us for its trust drive." And Mr. Brazel, do better. Thank you.
I have three more against this topic.
Okay, I'm fine with listening. All three of you folks are good? Go ahead.
John Baer.
I was going to speak on a couple other topics, on the consent agenda. Do I just have this one, three minutes for everything?
Yes.
Yeah, if you can, John.
Use this little thing to help with some stuff up on the screen. Keep the print a little larger. See if you can get this up there. That works. Good evening. John Baer. I'm from Augusta, Missouri. Thanks for the chance to speak to you. I wanted to talk about three topics. I'm asking you for your help in being fiscally responsible here. I think we've got some good things on the agenda tonight, especially in some of the bills being proposed, some road and bridge things that are terrific. However, I found some things that I don't think are very fiscally responsible, so that's where I'll start. Two of them are on the consent agenda, and I guess to vote on them separately, we have to remove them. That's my understanding. First one is $66,000 for an electrofishing boat. This is ... You can't read it very well. I'll read the orange part. "The boat will be used in all the county-owned water bodies to provide analysis of our fish populations in order to develop healthy fisheries within county water bodies." I'm all for that, but we don't have a fish biologist on staff, and just because we have an electric boat that you can go out there and shock the waters and bring the fish up, you still need professional help in what to do with the results. You find bass of a certain size and catfish of a certain size. There are companies out there that do this, and just a quick look on the web, I found one that, I mean, they'll do ponds for $500 to $1,000. I don't know how many bodies of water we have in our county parks, but this seems like a place where we could use a consultant, not spend 66 grand on a boat, and then not know what to do with the data. So, second item I'd like to talk about is a project aimed at increasing citizen access to the historic and government district and reducing vehicle emissions by cutting down circulation times of visitors. This is about parking down here in the old part of St. Charles, and it's an $800,000 spend to keep people from driving around the block a couple of times looking for an empty parking space. What I would say to you is, you've got other bills for roads and bridges where we spend a dollar and we get like $4 or $5 from federal funding. There are four of them on tonight for bridges on the Bottom Road and Fema Sage Creek Road, et cetera, where we get a lot of bang for our buck. If we used $800,000 in that same fashion, we could pay for $4 million of road and bridge improvements. I think that would go a lot further than spending $800,000 down here to help people park in Old Town St. Charles. And I was going to talk about Bill 5092, but I'll just say I echo the comments of many of the others that spoke against it. Leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baer.
Judith Moorfield.
Good evening. I don't have anything prepared this evening, but I come from an HR background. I spent almost 10 years in human resources. And as HR manager in charge of all the hiring and firing and training, et cetera, I'd have headhunters in different companies come to me all the time and say, "Let us help you with hiring here. We can get more people in for you and a bigger applicant source." And I would say to them, "Okay, then, what's my job for? Why would we pay $92,000 to have a company that started out in Belfast, Ireland? Why would we have them come in here who doesn't know our community? The pool of applicants that we have should be coming from our community." And if there is an HR person, don't we have an HR department? Shouldn't they be responsible for it? And if there's a problem with them discriminating against someone because of their race or because of their religion or sexual orientation, then there's a problem with that HR manager. We do not need to spend $92,000, and I don't know what kind of feather it would be in our hat, to be a pilot program because I believe that they are, from what I have read, and it's really hard to get deep when you dig into some of these companies, but they're very much like other companies that have come along, that they want you to give them money to help you do your job. And if you just look at, if you can turn this on, if you just look at what they're trying to do, they're selecting employers, those employers are going to have to abide by the rules that Talent Census puts up, and they're going to actually violate their own rules. So, it's not a good deal, any way you look at it. So, we are against it. Thank you.
On election integrity, Mary Ann Boatwright.
Unison Voting Solutions is a foreign company and national security risk. Noted right there. CISA, Center for Internet Security, is a foreign company and a national security risk. When states have an agreement with CISA, CISA has an agreement with Election Infrastructure Information Sharing Analysis Center, DHS, CISA. Our elections have been federalized. St. Charles County is listed here with ISIC. National voter registration requires states make public voter maintenance lists per federal law, except disclosure of those who decline to register to vote at the DMV. Their names are not to be shared. ERIC requires states deliver that data to ERIC and spend tax dollars again to get those individuals registered to vote, requiring states to break the law. ERIC requires DMV provide name, address, driver's license, last four digits of the social, date of birth, phone number, email, violating our privacy. ERIC contract states, "Should member receive requests ..." ERIC contracts states should member receive requests for ERIC data and determines it's legally obligated. It should not disclose without obtaining court order compelling it to do so. Copy provided to ERIC. ERIC is circumventing the will of the people and encouraging lawlessness. Democrat whistleblower Clint Curtis wrote 5149 flip algorithm in 2000 for Republican Speaker of Florida, of the Florida House. At 9:35 on 8/2, 100% reporting, Mr. Frisella was at 51%. At 5:28 on 8/3, Mr. Elam was at 51%. I'm not suggesting Mr. Elam is knowingly and willing, willfully involved in anything nefarious. I believe many are pawns in a game controlled elsewhere. I believe Secretary of State, Election Director, County Council have been misled and backed into a corner. Citizens are trying to help with an exit strategy. Get out of ERIC, CIS, locally control elections with no voting machines and no pole pads. Citizens from 50 states are forcing truth into the light to restore our nation. History will not treat us kindly if we ignore our moral responsibility to do the right thing. Thank you.
With an update on 22 Strong, Liam Robertson.
Good evening. My name is Liam Robertson, and I represent the St. Louis County Department of Labor. We are a group of students, 13 to 18 years of St. Charles County. We need monthly to plan the full event throughout the year. Our mission is to have fun events, give back to children, the community, protect their mental health, and more, not the local governments. We were raised from the family of 14 brothers and sisters, and have a better future for the community. I would like to update you on the monthly project 22 Strong. We will be working on a raise fund for 22 Strong. 22 Strong is an organization that has to prevent suicide among veterans. The number 22 is a number that can be carried to represent the 22 veterans who lose their lives to suicide every day. They'll go to support, they'll meet the veteran, they bring relatives, they support. I do remember that they had a kid that was working a marathon for 22 days, 2.2 miles on September 21st, without a purpose to print, where also a purpose to print had to put the cards. The information on 22 Strong can be found on the raise website which is shown up there. As you know, our group needs sponsors, private raise money for this, for the, for this, for the cards. I am here asking you to consider paying, showing our group and considering sharing with others, or maybe paying for that as well. As you know, our group needs, I told them I have saved 690,000 dollars, my 20,000 dollars ago. I appreciate that, my brother, for contributing to you guys. My goal of, of to bring that up even more. I, you will be glad to know I've completed 20 miles of my 22 mile goal. I'll be doing another mile with a parent city accountant and Nathan Beer Saturday morning. My fellow group member, Alan Mathieu, has rehired 300,000, 300,000 dollars ago. As you can see, we still have quite a bit to reach our goals before the wrap in just 12 days. We are very excited to bring attention to strong and important work of dead to prevent veteran mental health. On behalf of the St. Charles County Department of Labor, thank you for your time, consideration, and any help you can ask for the financial sponsors and waiting funds. Thank you for having me.
Hi, I'm Emily Winham, and I want to talk about the demographics of St. Charles County. Mr. Brazel and others have said over and over again that this is a Republican county. When looking at the voting history on issues, the voters have voted for what are considered to be liberal issues. For example, let's see, sorry, I was trying to rewrite this while I was going over there. Of 60, ah, that what it came down to was, okay, Trump, okay, in the 2020 election, Trump got 58% of the vote and Biden got 40%. In number of votes, that's 128,000 votes for Trump and 94,000, 90,000 for Biden. When looking at the voting history on issues, the voters voted for what to be considered liberal issues. In August 2018, 69% of St. Charles voters voted against right to work. In November 2018, 66% voted for medicinal marijuana. Fox News would have people believe that the majority of Republicans don't believe in getting the COVID vaccine, but yet only two counties in Missouri have a higher percentage of populations fully vaccinated than St. Louis County. Ah, sorry, population fully vaccinated, St. Louis County and Boone County. St. Louis, St. Charles County is made up a lot more than families that are a married man and woman who are conservative, Christian, white with 2.3 kids. We have residents who are black, brown, Hindu, Muslim, Jewish, single parents, and much to Mr. Brazel's dismay, members of the LGBTQ community. They all live here and deserve to have a voice. By saying St. Charles is a Republican county, four out of 10 voters are being ignored. That is 90,000 voters. Last week on Kel Brazil Show, I'm not sure why you pronounce it, she pronounces it Brazil, but whatever, Ken Gunther said that St. Charles was the most conservative county in Missouri. So I looked it up. Of 114 counties in Missouri, 108 had higher percentage of people voting Republican. So then I thought maybe he meant the county with the actual raw number of Trump votes. Nope, that goes to St. Louis County, who has 199,000 votes compared to St. Charles 128. The bottom line is Ken Gunther simply can't be trusted as a source. I know making stuff up and using buzzwords works really well for the small minority who believe in conspiracy theories, but the rest of us are tired of it and would like facts, data, and as icing on the cake, would like LGBTQ young people to not kill themselves.
Good evening, members of the County Council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, county public advocate. I said my piece at the 8/29/22 County Council meeting. The county, the elected official involved had lost all credibility. The public record speaks for itself. I'm still waiting for a law enforcement investigation into threats from the lame duck, Joe Cronin, threats of violence, physical assault, and government civil rights violations. I'm waiting for our police chief to hand over the case and circumstances to the Missouri Highway Patrol, who can do a impartial and fair investigation. Security of these council chambers and county council meetings, which I brought up numerous times, now include the search of all county employees. My question is, what about elected officials? And to include members of the county director of administration's office and her assistants? Are they being searched by county sheriffs and county police like the rest of my friends behind me are? It really belittles us to be about this big. Consent agenda tonight, $1.9 million of construction of a boat dock with a billionaire at our expense? Really? I shake my head, and wow. Consent agenda for $800,000 for smart parking management system that we have no idea about to be created in downtown St. Charles with free Google Maps? Let's get real. Expenditure of over $483,000 at the 8/29/22 council meeting for more controllers at intersection traffic lights? We spent well over $10 million of this federal government idea of Gateway Greenlight Program with little to no results. How many sets of controllers do we need to replace in a 10-year period? Just because you ask for fiscal approval does not mean that you have to vote to approve the expenditure and throw your fiduciary responsibility right out the window. The county's executive administration policy of spend, spend, and spend. You as council allow all this unnecessary, uncontrollable, and irresponsible spending. You have the ability to question the administration and stop spending right here and right now instead of just rubber stamping the huge bills for payment because of politics and pressure from Steve Elman. We need a desperate need for elected Charter Review Commission, and Bill 5100, we need to schedule a public hearing for the tax levy hearing. Bill 1592 is very concerning for a foreign talent census company for our county. Just because it's free money does not mean that you have to have your hand out. I do not want to be the federal government's guinea pig. I repeat, I do not want to be the federal government's guinea pig. Thank you.
The final public speaker.
Okay, that concludes public comments. County Executive Elman, do you have any oral report tonight?
I have an oral report, a little bit of some comments.
Okay, great. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove the boat dock, the smart parking, and the boat, the, whatever that boat is, on our electrofishing boat.
Second.
Start with the first item we want to discuss.
Yeah, I'll ask Ryan to come up here, but I want to talk about the Klondike Boat Park, the Klondike Dock. Just so everybody's clear here, this is not Hoffman's boat dock. This is the county's boat dock. He is building his own, and he is with his own funding, where the county got an agreement to lease him the ground for whatever that amount is, maybe it's $5 per person that gets on the boat or something like that. I think there's some kind of, but the fact is, is we've worked, we were going to do this boat dock way before Hoffman ever came along, and it got expensive. It was a million-dollar budget, I think, and it got, was that the $2 million with everything? But it's got with steel and all the different stuff, but this is going to be a fabulous addition to Klondike Park. This is for the park users, when they, if you go, we go out on the river all the time, you both go down the ramp and you, there's mud and stuff. It's going to be 130-foot or something.
Right. There's, there's no way right now to tie off your boat when you put it in, so this will provide much safer and better access for people that are accessing the Missouri River. So, you know, right now with the current in the Missouri going down there, if you put your boat in and you're by yourself, you're going to have a hard time pulling your truck out, because once you're in the water, you're in the water. So this dock will allow people to tie off, allow for better access for fishing and ADA accessibility down there. So like Joe said, this was a project that we've been working on to improve the access and safety of the Klondike launch area, and has nothing to do with the Hoffman project.
Yeah, and so this is, I am in favor of this. We, there's a lot of fishermen, a lot of boaters, a lot of people like to use the river. There's really nice beaches on the Missouri River. If you haven't boated it, you should try it. So this is just, and the county parks, just so everybody understands, there was a proposition, I don't know, 10 years ago, and Proposition Y, I think it was, and the parks, it's a parks tax. So the taxes has to be spent on parks, and it's a pretty generous tax. It's $3 million or whatever a year, and so that's why we have a wonderful parks department. We really do have a state-of-the-art parks department. So, so that's what this dock is, and it's going to be for all the county residents. So that's what that is. I just wanted to explain that.
While Ryan's up here, I spoke with him in depth about the fishing boat, okay? And I know I have a few lakes of my own, and I had a lot of serious questions about it, but just to summarize what Ryan said, the county, to me at least, the county has 20-plus fishing lakes, and fishing is an important part, important recreation for our county parks. Contrary to what was said, he has two fishing, fisheries management people that came from the Missouri Department of Conservation. And Missouri Department of Conservation is cutting back the services they provide to the county. So Ryan and I both checked with private fish survey teams, somebody did, you did, John, and the cost-benefit ratio is this, boats typically like this have a lifetime of decades, and they'll be paid for back pretty, pretty quickly.
It'll be paid back in cost savings within a year.
Yeah.
So we have 41 lakes that are managed within the county park system. Currently, we have 24 that are managed for fishing, with probably some additional ones that could be managed for fishing. And then the electrofishing boat will allow us to ensure healthy fish populations that will reduce our need to stock, which reduces our costs to buy fish, because we're now raising healthy fish populations within our park. It also allows us to harvest fish and move them from lake to lake, which will in turn save us money in terms of stocking fish. So if we see one lake is high in bluegill, we can harvest a certain amount of bluegill out of that lake and relocate it in a lake that might be low in bluegill. So this will pay itself back within a year is what we're forecasting in terms of the cost savings from going, outsourcing the studies that our aquatics team can do and fish stocking. So, you know, right now, it's, we think it's a good expenditure for the parks department moving forward.
And it also gives all of us fishermen in this county the opportunity to sound off to you if the fish aren't biting, Ryan.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Right now, like if we had a problem with a lake, the only way that we would really know is if somebody was complaining that the fishing is bad. And, you know, any good fisherman knows that there's a lot of complaints that the fishing's bad, even when the fishing's good, the fishing can be bad. So this allows us to have those studies that allows for those healthy populations. And, you know, the one thing that we, you know, used to do with MDC when we outsourced this to MDC, one thing that we ran into was, you know, they would do these studies and they'd say, hey, you need to take out 400 catfish. Okay, well, we had no way to take 400 catfish out unless we were sitting out there all, you know, with fishing poles. But this will allow us to, and then, you know, a year or two later, we come back to MDC and say, hey, we'd like to survey this lake, and they'd say, well, did you do the, did you take out 400 fish? I said, well, no. And so, you know, it would kind of irritate them that they would create this. This allows us to do the studies and actually implement a plan for better management.
So, did you get the numbers? I mean, that's what I went over with you. It's an absolute savings.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Our natural resources team has over 20 years of experience with this type of thing working for MDC.
Any other discussion about items on the consent agenda?
The smart parking one we pulled off. On the smart parking one, is that, who is that, John Ryan or, oh, Amanda? Man, exactly what is this?
So this is a smart parking management system in downtown St. Charles, so it's kind of the main street and this, you know, government area, the surrounding blocks around that. So it's a pretty expansive area. It covers, I wish I knew how many parking spots, but it's in the thousands. It'll be the largest system that Fiber, the vendor we selected, has in place. They have a current working system in Kirkwood and others around the country, but it, I mean, it's little pucks in the roadway that tell you exactly what space is available, and you have an app that's free and available to everybody. It can be specific to our area, whatever little logo we want to make it, and it gives people instant access to what parking space is available nearest to where they want to go.
So, hold on, David, this, this is a federal grant with how much are we paying them to, 10%?
10%.
So I tell you, I have a problem with this, and, you know, it's easy to say, well, it's federal money. No, it's our money. It's still our money. It's everyone's money. And we have these towns like New Malle and Augusta, these little towns that they had sidewalks falling apart, and Currid, the streets falling apart, and they never get any money. And this is a complete waste of money.
So I just, so this is CMAC funds, which cannot be used for those kind of uses. They are strictly given to reduce emissions, so it's all about reducing travel times. So those little towns don't qualify for these funds, and these monies usually So those little towns don't qualify for these funds and these monies usually go to bus replacements, bus replacements in St. Louis County or MetroLink, you know, operations.
So this is like one of those green bills with this?
Yeah.
So if you're not a big believer in all that, then this is again, something that's not, something I'm going to really, I think.
We can't continue to build ourselves out of the congestion we have and, I mean, we can't add lanes in downtown St. Charles. This is a way to keep people off the road so that there's more place for the people that need to get where they need to go.
Could you speak on the partnership of this with the city of St. Charles too?
Yes, yes. We, they are giving another 10% and then the remaining 80 is from a federal grant.
It's fine. I'm not going to support it. The reason I, it's very hard for me to approve an 800,000 dollar spend, no matter what the reasons are, when there's other money that could go into these. It's not your, I understand, you're going to get whatever kind of federal funding and you're doing a good job. I'm not criticizing.
Thank you for that.
But I just don't, I don't think this looks good. The optics are terrible.
But just, just to be clear about it, this is no different than any other road board project. They're pointing up half the money as well as county government and then the federal government's matching it with 80%.
Correct.
And how many parking spots do you anticipate this covering in St. Charles?
I think, I want to say it's around 2,000.
So it could also be an economic development tool because if these people can find a place to park, they're more likely to stop in downtown St. Charles and spend money too, correct?
Yes, and if it works, great. We're hoping that we can, you know, expand it to other places like Augusta may need something like this someday.
Correct my math here, but we're talking about 8,000 dollars.
800,000.
800,000 dollars is, is the total project.
The total, yes.
What's our, our piece of the pie?
80,000.
80,000.
Yep.
St. Charles will be 80,000.
St. Charles City's going to be 80,000.
Yep.
Dave, you have, Councilmember Hammond, you have questions on this?
She answered it, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda.
Can I ask one question? This is a take advantage of the Gateway Greenlight System, right?
Yes.
There's been some comments about spending all that money and, you know, what good is it going to do? And as you know, it's done a lot of good already on traffic safety, but this will also be a convenience for people who will be able to find a place to park.
Yes.
And again, like you suggested, if it works in St. Charles, we'll try other places in the county that have similar congestion problems.
Yep, and our linking of all the fiber network and knowing, yes, being able to link all that together is critical for all of that.
Thank you. John, Mr. Gracy?
As my understanding, then when this project was first talked about with the city of St. Charles, St. Charles was excited about this because of all the festivals they have downtown. And so it's not just your day-to-day traffic of the government center, which there is a lot of people that do complain about not being able to find parking when they come here. But we have the city that does actively market and host a number of festivals downtown. And when you have those events, parking is a premium. And as we know, the festival little hills, they, they show people all the way from St. Charles West. So having this system that allows people to know immediately where there's, where there's parking is also a way of marketing the community is, you know, we're, we are business friendly and we're willing to provide that investment to make shopping in St. Charles easier and more convenient.
Thank you.
A motion to accept the three items that were removed.
Hey, if you do want to individually.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay. Motion to accept the parks, the Klondike Park dock.
We have a motion to accept the, with a second. Okay, should we, council roll?
All those in favor.
All those in favor? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the 2022 electrofishing boat.
I'll second that.
Second, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And last of all, I'd like for us to accept the road and traffic, the St. Charles Smart Parking Management System.
All in favor?
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. All three of those items that were removed from consent agenda are now passed. Okay, moving on, and ladies, thank you for waiting so long, but we have Resolution Number 22-13 recognizing September 17th to 23rd as Constitution Week in St. Charles County.
And I'll read the resolution.
Please.
Resolution Number 22-13 sponsored by councils as a whole, a resolution recognizing September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in St. Charles County, Missouri. Whereas the St. Charles chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution has been in existence since 1909 and currently consists of 178 members. And whereas this chapter has a dedicated Constitution Week Committee and the committee seeks to preserve the past, enhance the present, and invest in the future. And whereas the Daughters of the American Revolution work to educate all citizens, especially the students and those seeking to become newly naturalized citizens about America's founding documents. And whereas in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to dedicate September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas the United States Congress adopted such a resolution as President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed Public Law 915 on August the 2nd, 1956, to establish Constitution Week to commemorate the history and importance of this document, so central to our freedoms and responsibilities as Americans. And whereas September 17th, 2022, marks the 235th anniversary of the sign of the Constitution of the United States of America by the delegates to the Constitutional Convention. And whereas during this time, we remember that the Constitution is a living document that guarantees the freedoms Americans enjoy. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council hereby proclaims the week of September the 17th through the 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in St. Charles County, Missouri. Section 2, the St. Charles County Council hereby further asks citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by studying the words of the Constitution adopted by the framers and ratified by the states.
That being said, we vote on the resolution. All in favor of the resolution?
No, I have to take a roll.
Okay, take a roll call please.
Resolution 2213, a resolution recognizing September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in St. Charles County, Missouri. Councilmember Schneider, Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum, Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Resolution passes. I'd like to thank you ladies. You consistently come here every year and remind us the importance of the Constitution. And I, just speaking for the council, I appreciate y'all doing that every year. Okay?
Do you want to come up and get a picture? We got chairs to dance around. One, two, three. Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Since we didn't have time for comments before, I would just like to ask the audience, how many of you have researched your ancestry to see if you have an ancestor that did fight in the Revolutionary War? How many? Well, if you have, this is a very worthwhile organization to belong to, the Daughters of the American Revolution or the Sons of the American Revolution. Please seek it out and, and join. They really need your help. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to bills for final passage.
Bill Number 5092, an ordinance made in the 2022 budget as adopted by Ordinance 21-096 as amended to accept a supplemental appropriation for the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development for the budget of the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development to collaborate with talent census to improve connections between employers, seeking new employees, and job seekers seeking a job or retaining in the St. Charles County vicinity.
I would like to ask Ms. Lori Myers, who is the County Director of Workforce Development, to come up, along with Mr. Garen McCam, who is a Special Assistant for the Missouri Department of Workforce Development. They'll brief us a little bit on this program and also explain to us what we need to know and any questions we might have. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Again, Garen McCam, Higher Education, Workforce Development. Appreciate this opportunity to come and speak before you all. A lot of things were said about talent census, so I won't reiterate things that have been shared, but I do want to remind everyone that this is simply just a case management system. That's, that's all it is. It's a system to make work more productive and make more people efficient and doing their jobs. And so we've seen across the country, the different businesses with the, we need workers to just show up signs. And so this platform will help actually assist these businesses. So the company is a for-profit company that aims to make people more self-sufficient and again, help these struggling businesses. And so the key words I've said so far is productivity, efficiency, and for-profit, which are underpinnings of capitalism. And so I'm pretty sure that we're all fans for the most part in here of capitalism and conservatism, and those things are underpinnings of both of those qualities. And so we talked a lot about unconscious bias today. We talked specifically about the LGBT community. We talked about Black Lives Matter. And I say the organization Black Lives Matter because there is a distinction between the organization that is a political arm and actually believing in Black Lives Matter, White Lives Matter, Blue Lives Matter, every person's life matters. I am a Christian who's strong beliefs. I worked at the Conservative Heritage Foundation in Washington DC. I was a pluripointee under Donald J. Trump for the US Department of Education. And people would not give me the time of day when they saw my name and looked me up, they wouldn't give me an interview. And so this is a type of platform that will push that to a side, gets you in front of the business so they can actually look for you at the skills you actually have and what you can actually do. So with that, we'll turn it over.
I'll just add that the St. Charles County Workforce Development Department, we've been administering workforce programs for 50 years now. We've always been federally funded and in that requires that we have a case management system. And this is kind of an unprecedented opportunity for us to have input into what that case management system looks like and how it works. If we don't have input into it, they'll go to another workforce region and they'll have the opportunity to pilot the program and help set it up and decide, you know, what works and what doesn't work. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have right now.
Yeah, just, just two things. One was that, I got a couple of emails. They are paying us for this program?
Correct. It is state discretionary funds.
So we're not paying anything? Okay. The second thing was, this is coming from the state? This, you know, the way it was worded for us was that this was coming from the state of Missouri and from the governor's office requesting us to, you know, possibly pilot this. Can you explain that?
Yes, so this, or do you want to take a ticket?
Yep. I'll just say that these are what is called Workforce Innovation Opportunity Funds, discretionary funds that comes from the federal government or the Department of Labor and goes to each governor across the state or across the nation. And so discretionary funds, we can use a percentage of those to actually help with workforce development, innovation, and opportunities. And so that's a portion of the funds that has come from our department underneath, under the governor of Missouri, and that's how we're going to use these funds. And so it's federal dollars, no state dollars. So anything you want to add to that?
Got it.
Okay.
Mr. Brazel?
Ms. Myers, who, who brought this, this company forth to St. Charles County and why St. Charles County?
I'm not sure how the state, I don't know, Garen can talk to how the state came into contact with Talent Census, but I was contacted by Yvonne Wright with the state's Division of Workforce Development and asked if we would be willing to pilot this program. And we thought it was a good opportunity. As I mentioned earlier, we don't historically have the opportunity to provide input into how the system works. We're usually like, here's your, here's our system, learn it, use it, and, you know, the current one is not very user-friendly. This is an opportunity to either enhance that case management system or eventually replace it.
Yeah, I don't quite, workforce development isn't one of your responsibilities is training potential employees, is that correct?
We have funding that can be spent on training or sending eligible candidates to school.
So that's your job? That's what they do in workforce development, correct?
That's one of the options that we can provide.
Okay, so what I, what I don't understand is I don't think it's the government's job to, I think it's indoctrination on some of these speaking terms that they're using on their website, the information I got. And so I wonder what, I, I don't, you guys are just doing your job. So this is not personal, but when it says, it says COVID has further ingrained inequalities. What the hell does that mean? I mean, really, what does that mean? It's on the website right here. What, can you explain that to me?
I can't attest to what they put on their website, but I can tell you that with.
No, but this is the company we're hiring, so we should know what their intentions are.
Right. If you can tell us, we should hire you.
So can you tell me what that means?
Well, with the federal funding, there are a lot of equal opportunity requirements that go along with that.
No, no, it says COVID has further ingrained inequalities. What inequalities? What, how has COVID ingrained further inequalities in this community?
I can't attest to that.
Okay, so then it says while social movements like Black Lives Matter and Me Too have awakened society to its imbalances. What does that mean?
So again, I, I've looked at the website and I haven't seen, I mean, that does not look like they're, they don't have a black and red and white font on their website. Their actual colors are blue and white, so I don't know what that is.
Okay, does anyone else have questions?
No, no, I'm telling you, Joe, this is important. So it says overcome unconscious bias is better for society and your business. It just has all these buzzwords that are very woke. And so I, I am not going to support this. And I want to tell you guys, you know, for Grayson and, and Josh, you guys talking about me being mean and unfair is so untrue. I never used any disparages, disparages marks. You know nothing about me. When you talk about, you talk about right to work, I've been a union construction guy for 35 years, and when I was on the chairman of Republican Party, they wanted a resolution supporting right to work and I made sure it did not go through. So let's make sure we're clear there. I also go to local two and train the people down there. I go to Carperge Union, train people, and we have a apprenticeship program with corrections in the state of Missouri, giving people a second chance. So that's what I do for job training. And so I, I think when you said that I should be tar and feathered, I never said anything about LGBTQ. I just said, I don't believe that these are what needs to be done in job site training using these buzzwords and these talking points. This in my view, this is my opinion, and I'm entitled to it. This is indoctrination, not training. Now, that doesn't mean that I, I feel ill about you or Grayson or you guys. I told Amy that I think Grayson comes in here and he's got, he's a very courageous person. I told her that over the weekend. I said, it's good to have different opinions, but don't criticize me. It's actually tar and feathered. I would never say that about you.
These folks never said those comments, Joe.
He said it on Facebook. Not, not you guys. No, I'm sorry, not you guys. No, I'm sorry, I'm not, that's not going towards you.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. But anyway, so I'm not going to support this. This isn't something this county needs. And then after this, this has gotten out on what a lot of people feel about this, it's got to be talked to the legislators and they'll probably kill it anyway.
I hope you have it in mind.
Any other questions? Mr. Hammond?
Go ahead.
I'm Jenny Warren and I'm the Assistant Director at Workforce Development. And I'm still not quite sure if you understand what we do there, but what we do, we have case managers that prepare people for employment or if they need to get retrained, we walk them through the steps that's required. We find out what they're interested in doing and then they choose what school they want to go to and we make sure that they're on the right list, on the eligible training provider list, and then we can fund that training. We don't put anybody into training or do anything like that. I, I just think that what this does is, for the employer's side, the benefit is that it actually puts all job seekers on an even playing field. it actually puts all job seekers on an even playing field. And employers don't have to participate in this, but if they do, they will see a resume without identifying information that could possibly cause bias. And I know not every HR person is biased, but there are some that if you list an address that might represent a low-income area, you may not get an interview.
Please, quiet down.
If you, if you work at, I've been with the county for 30 years. If I were to lose this job and apply for another one, that alone would probably disqualify me because of being an older worker. So, there's a lot of things that, on a resume, that can cause people to have bias. So, this is basically just taking that information out at the very beginning, because once the employer says they want to interview that person, then all of the information is provided to them, their name, address, everything. So, that's just the beginning. But the main point for our job center, and like Lori was saying, our counselors, it takes three and a half hours, once they have someone they want to enroll into training, it'll take them three and a half hours to do one enrollment. And what this system, and Mr. Rice has already started working with us, what it will do is allow our counselors to say what works, what doesn't work in the current system, where there's duplication, and he will actually sit down with the frontline staff, get that information, and then try to build a better case management system. Whereas in the past, this MoJobs is what we currently have as a case management system, came from the state, and it was not run by anybody at the lower levels, our frontline staff who actually work with it day-to-day. So, I just, so this is a way for us to give our input into the system and possibly reduce enrollment time and just work a lot better for our counselors at the job center.
Mr. Hammond, I believe you had questions.
Well, thank you very much for your information, but I'd kind of like to do a little more research, so I'm going to make a motion that we table this.
I just have one comment I'd like to add before I make that. Back in 2010, when I first became councilman, we had unemployment problems then, and your office is right down the road from my house on 79. So, I went to there as a, even though I'm a self-employed businessman, I went there as a prospective job seeker. I wanted to see what you guys did. And I was really impressed by the people that worked with me, and they said, what are your skill sets? Would you be willing to take these classes? What are you looking for? They really spent some time to try to help me, and that's always impressed me my, some years of council. If I understand this correctly, one thing I want to hear, this will help you do your job better, correct? And then I would also ask if we're going to table this, that this piece that was sent out to the council members from Talent Census, I would act that that become part of the public record, so these people can, in the audience can view it. But one thing I'd like to particularly say is, I think this sentence is very good. We believe that people should be hired on their ability to do the job, not because of what they look like, how old they are, or where they're from, okay? That's what you're after, and you're after trying to do your job more efficiently. So, based on that, let's take a vote on whether to table this or not, okay? Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
I just want to make sure I understand this. This is something you already said, it's voluntary, no employer asks us, it has to be asked us. The point here is, when the employer does ask us, the information we give will not prejudice the people who gave it on these particular issues. For instance, if someone is, has dyslexia, I assume we will not make them handwrite an application with all the stuff. Well, we will make sure that that's not, that that does not show on their record that they're dyslexic, or am I taking a bad example?
For that example, I mean, there'll be more, a little more specifics. There's laws in place and processes to help individuals with disabilities. And so, this platform could help make that more efficient and easier, but that's kind of more into the weeds than just the system.
Okay, but not much has been said about the handicap. That's one of the groups this is designed to help, isn't it?
Right, exactly.
People who have a particular handicap that might not keep them from doing the job.
Right.
But might make them look like they can't do the job.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that's really the emphasis here. And the third thing is, if people ask us for this information, we give it to them. They still have the right to interview, interview people, right?
Right.
But it's just the information we're going to give them is going to be based upon a person's ability to do the job, and they'll still interview people, they'll still make a decision based on that interview, but hopefully, they'll interview people who are, based on what we've done, they'll all be people who can do the job. And I guess the other thing, just a comment, Mr. Chairman, you know, anybody's, you know, gone to, in law school, you take exams in law school, you don't put your name on it, you put a number on it. They don't want, they don't want to let the teacher, you know, if the teacher has a pet, the teacher doesn't know who's, doesn't know who's exam they're grading, and when you take the bar exam, it's the same way. The bar examiners don't know, they don't have a name, they can't, you know, look at your name and make some decisions. And I'm, as a former judge, I'm on the Judicial Performance Commission, and we finished just last week, the commission reviewed, basically, information that came from all the lawyers, all the jurors, defendants, plaintiffs, everybody in the courts that are in the nonpartisan court plan, which we're not. So, this is mainly Court of Appeals, St. Louis City and County, Jackson County, Green County. But we looked at the evaluations from all those people, and on those evaluations, we decided if we were going to recommend anyone not be approved. There were no names, there was no information about race, gender, anything. We looked at their work product, we looked at what other people said about them, and the whole thing was done to eliminate any kind of bias. And, you know, I mean, that's a controversial issue. I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, that people can have different opinions about that. But we had, after Ferguson, we had someone come and talk to all of our police officers about implicit bias. And again, some of them thought it was worthwhile, others, maybe they didn't. But, you know, we did it. We did it for a year. We don't, we don't do it anymore. We don't think we have a problem. But you all know, it's easy to get sued if you're, if you're a, an employer. We get sued all the time. This guy over here does a good job of defending us, and, but I think if you, if you're an employer and you do get sued, if you started off with this process, I think it's a, you're a step ahead when you go into court.
Yeah. The other thing, it's ironic, but today I got a call from a 55-year-old in my district who's got several bachelor's degrees and a master's degree that complained about he couldn't find a job because he's 55. So, it's not just color of skin, it's color of your hair, okay? It could be a lot of different things. This is designed to eliminate that from the process. So, you know, we'll table it, let everybody get more information. Again, I would like to have this put on the, on the website for public viewing, and with that, we have a motion to table.
We have, Dave Hammond made a motion to table, we have no second.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion's tabled. Thank you for your time, appreciate it. Okay, moving on to bill 5093.
Bill number 5093, an ordinance waiving certain fees for recycling and building permits for the Cotterville Community Fire Protection District to assist the fire department with rehab, remodel, and addition of the fire district station number three located at 6310 Weldon Spring Road.
Questions and comments on bill 5093?
I have a comment. Many years ago, the county building department was set up to be self-sufficient, so it wouldn't be a burden on taxpayers. Based on the fee structure, it pays, from the people that come in and get permits pays for the department, not the taxpayers. And I just have a hard time sometimes waiving permit fees, especially from, it's one thing if it's, it was a flood or something, but from the fire district who has lots of money, I have a problem waiving a permit fee for them. So, I'm opposed to this.
Okay, hearing Mr. Hammond's objections, can I ask county staff, is that common for all the other fire districts in this county as well?
No, sir. They, this was one where there was, I believe it was a highway department project, and they waived their fees for us. And so, now that they're doing a rehab of this fire station, they asked us for reciprocity.
Okay, so, what did Moha dot have to do with it exactly?
No, no, our highway department.
Your highway department, okay.
Project.
So, the highway, the project, our highway project caused the necessity for this, this project, then, no?
No, I'm sorry. A few years, a few years ago, we did a project, they also have fees that they charged. They waived them for us on our project. And so, when they went to go rehab this station, they waived, they're asking us to waive our fees.
Like they did for us?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't understand what, why would we have to pay fees to the fire district?
The fire departments all have fees when you build something.
But I don't know that, that county government is obligated to pay those.
Well, we have been in the past.
I'm kind of opposed to that.
Cities, the cities have fees as well if we're inside a city when we build, and some of them will waive for us and some of them don't.
Interesting.
Mr. Elman?
Yeah, Mr. Hammond probably remembers when we had this issue with the city of St. Charles building their treatment plant, and they wanted us to waive it, and that was a lot of work, and we didn't waive it. So, basically, it's up to you. Again, it's just, do we want to reciprocate here? If we don't, I'm sure the next time it comes up, they'll, they'll do the same to us and make us pay.
Any other questions regarding this bill?
Bill number 5093, an ordinance waiving certain fees for recycling and building permits for the Cotterville Community Fire Protection District to assist the fire department with a rehab, remodel, and addition of the fire district station number three located at 6310 Weldon Spring Road. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum? Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Bill 5093 passes. Moving on to bill 5094.
Bill number 5094, an ordinance amending section 605.115 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri regarding requirements for licensed concealed carry security officer and 605.140 regarding police officer provisions.
Questions or comments on bill 5094?
So, again, I think it's more than-
Hearing none?
Bill number 5094, an ordinance amending section 605.115 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri regarding requirements for licensed concealed carry security officer and 605.140 regarding police officer provisions. Councilmember Ehlum? Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider? Councilmember Brazel?
Okay, moving on to bills for introduction, bill 5095.
Bill number 5095, requested by John Lyons, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute intergovernmental agreements with municipalities for road maintenance and repair.
Questions or comments regarding bill number 5095? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 5096.
Bill number 5096, requested by John Lyons, sponsored by Jill Cronin, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute surface transportation program agreement, federal project STP 5414641, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for reimbursement of funds to 80% of the eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of $1 million for work associated with resurfacing shoulders and bridge rehabilitation on Josephville Road from Missouri P to Kirsten Road.
I would like to thank Amanda and John Lyons and John Greif, who I spoke with the chairman of the Josephville Board of Directors for the village today, and they're extremely happy with all the hard work you guys did in improving the roads around Josephville. We had a meeting with them a couple, I had a meeting with them a couple of months ago, and they had a lot of concerns, but you guys have really addressed them, and they're very, very happy, and thanks for getting this grant money to help those folks out. So, that's all I have to say on that one. I guess, moving on to, anybody else have comments on 5096? Moving on to bill 5097.
Bill number 5097, requested by John Lyons, sponsored by Jill Brazel, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute surface transportation program agreement, federal project STP 7302693, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for reimbursement of funds to 80% of the eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of $480,000 for work to replace Bridge 3650004, more specifically Augusta Bottom Road Bridge over a tributary to the Missouri River.
Questions and comments on bill 5097? Hearing none, we move to bill 5098.
Bill number 5098, requested by John Lyons, sponsored by Jill Brazel, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute surface transportation program agreement, federal project STP 7302694, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for reimbursement of funds to 80% of the eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of $504,000 for work to replace Bridge 358001, more specifically Femi Osage Creek Road Bridge over a tributary of Femi Osage Creek.
Questions and comments on bill 5098? Hearing none, we'll move to bill 5099.
Bill number 5099, requested by John Lyons, sponsored by Jill Cronin and Jill Brazel, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute surface transportation program agreement, federal project STP 5414642, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for reimbursement of funds to 80% of the eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of $1 million for work associated with the roadway resurfacing and shoulders reconstruction, more specifically West Meyer Road from Missouri W to Denke Road.
Again, thanks to county highway transportation team with the new park out, Oglesby Park out there, and we have the Wentzville Rotary Park, and Wentzville's just done a lot of work on West Meyer as well. This will be a nice addition that's really going to tie that area in real nice with all the amenities that are out there. So, thanks a lot for all your work on that. Any other comments on bill 5099? Moving on to bill 5100.
Bill number 5100, requested by Tracy Bane, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2022.
Questions or comments on bill 5100?
Next meeting.
Next meeting will be the public hearing, okay? Okay, that ends the bills for introduction. Is there any action, any table bills tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements and miscellaneous, any announcements from anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to announce that I disapprove of people attacking Mr. Brazel personally, just as much as I objected in the past of them attacking other people on the council. So, I just, I hope that everybody can get up and talk, and if you want to criticize positions people have taken, but the personal attacks, I don't like them, so, even if they're against Mr. Brazel.
And echoing at Mr. Elman, I think tonight was a bit of improvement over some of the past meetings, so.
It was better, but we still got a ways to go.
So, yeah, we got a ways to go, but let's all talk. We have a lot of work to do, so I think we're on the right track there. With all that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.